In meeting of Oak Park Heights, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have enough chairs for everyone back there? I think so. All right, well, tonight I want to welcome our new planning commission member, Mr. Nelson. Congratulations and thanks for joining the planning commission. We're excited to have you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Everyone should have an agenda on their, in front of them, or there are some on the back table. If anyone has anything, is there any adjustments to the agenda or any changes needed? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Will be approved.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next thing our agenda is the approval of planning commission meetings from May 9th, 2024. I didn't have anything. Does anybody have any changes?
Just to make sure that you know I read them, on page two, about the fourth paragraph down starts with Commissioner Kramer, seconded by Commissioner Husby, move to closed. Should say closed, not closed.
I make a motion, we approve the May 9th agenda with the changes.
Second. So I have a motion to approve with the change and the removal of the D from the sentence closed. All those, are any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The May 9th, 2024 minutes are approved. Department, let's start with you, Jake. Got any updates for us?
Mr. Chair, Plan Commission, good evening. Quick update here, we're working in the background, just from the city hall standpoint, working the background on our budget for next fiscal year. Also at our last meeting, I had mentioned that we're moving closer in extending an offer to a finance director candidate, and we have indeed come to terms with our finance director candidate. That individual is starting here on June 24th, so we're looking forward to getting Allison Egger on board here as our new finance director and join our leadership team here at Oak Park Heights. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay, awesome, good news. That's a good position to get filled. We don't have any commissioners here today. Do you have any other reports from staff or anyone tonight? Scott, anyone else?
No.
All right, hearing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight. This is for the visitors and public comment, okay? And I want to make sure this is clear, this is an opportunity to speak for, from the public to address the commission with questions or comments on issues that are not on the agenda tonight. Please limit your comments to three minutes. So is there anybody who has anything to speak to tonight that's not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, we will move to the public hearings tonight. The first public hearing we have tonight is Mr. Jamie Junker, JK and K Group LLP, has brought forth a request to consider a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use classification of low-density residential to medium-density residential for the property located at 5676 Oak Green Avenue North. I'd like to start with applicant coming forward to give us a summary of the proposal. Please limit your comments tonight to like 10 to 15 minutes, okay? Appreciate it. When you come forward, state your name and who you are, please.
Is this part of the public hearing?
This is part of the public hearing, yes.
You need to open.
Oh, I need to open the public hearing, sorry. I will officially open the public hearing. Do I need to?
Do we need a motion?
We don't need a motion to open it, do we?
No, we typically don't.
We don't, yeah. So the public meetings open for Jamie Junker, JK Group LLP.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Junker. I grew up on 60th, 63rd Street North, and my wife and I are the applicants. Maureen and I, our first home was on Ojibwe, where we started raising our family and then had a CPA practice down at the corner of what was the Hall Chiropractic Clinic, and during that time, we purchased the home at 5676 Oak Green, so we've owned it some, oh, 24, 25, 26 years, and it was all made. We contacted Dave in the spring and said, you know, I think we want to list it and understand what the interest is from just listing the property. As we got closer, closer to listing it, you know, I said, you know, I think what I'd really like to do is go talk to the city, talk to the staff, show them the pictures of, you know, what we had designed, and see if there's some input that we could pick up a little momentum on. We told the city on November 8th then that we were planning on listing, but it was kind of like, I told them that day, I said, we don't have any more choices for this property. We want to have a cohesive plan. I think it's better than us just starting to sell things. I think it's problematic for a number of reasons if we were to sell the house. One of our concerns is somebody buying the house, they could want to split off a lot, and it just isn't as nice of a plan if, if it all would get built under one umbrella, one plan. There were a number of advantages to list at the same time that we're putting the application in, and I think that's very important to this. We want to know and wanted to know, you know, what maybe other developers thought of it. Maybe we were missing something, maybe there were better uses than, you know, we were thinking of. Another reason is to get feedback of the home. We think the home has value, it's one of the older homes in the, in the city, but to get that value also was, was very important to us. After many discussions, we couldn't really get around how to list the land and not list the house and show it. So it's a little bit of, the houses getting a lot of showings. After we met with the city, we decided to lower the price substantially just because it was, the house is cleanly, but it's just very, there's a lot of stuff in it, so we chose to do that. We also wanted to see if there was interest in both, the house and the, the 1.9 acres, for the purpose of just, there's a belief that a better project is one that handles all three acres, 2.9 acres. The city knows what, you know, it's going to be, we can plan on it. If by chance a developer would come in and say, we think we're well-suited to take this over from the city, we would look at that, but quite frankly, the ideal in all of this is that Maureen and I would live there, we would develop it, and we would develop it under the plan we're presenting tonight. That's our ideal. It does create a situation, what would happen if we get an offer? Our feeling was that this was coming so close to us listing that we could, in good faith, tell the people either it's going to be on contingency and here's exactly why, or we would take it off the market, okay? So that doesn't go forever, but the November 8th meeting with the staff gave us a little, a little hope, because we could see that this time around, it was more in sync with the, the goal for that area. So we did feel encouraged, and that leads us to tonight. The report came in advance, where seems very fair to us, very positive in a number of areas. We have put some effort into a new traffic report, and we think that's favorable. We did work with the city to move the driveway, which was on Oak Green, farther to the south, and just kind of wondering, I mean, the idea is that...
It's up on the screen, too.
Okay, thanks. Could you flip through to the first page?
And remember, we want to keep this relatively short.
Yeah, we've got two more minutes. It's just designed to look like a single-family home, complimentary to those in the neighbors, and then each one of those buildings, of which there's five, is two units. So there's garages in the back, two entrances, one off Oak Green, which the one on the right there now has been moved to the back, and we do understand that this group needs to like it for us to be successful and move forward. We also understand the council, of course, would need to like it, and then we understand there'd be a project to plan it out, and we understand there's some effort into that, so did want Dave to answer any maybe questions. Is it possible to request that Dave follow up at the end? He can give his comments at that point.
Yep, I think that seems fair, Mr. Junker. Do you have any additional comments or any other summary for us to talk about tonight here on this point?
I just hope you, you know, agree it's a nice-looking project. I think we all get a lot out of it when there's one project going over the entire 2.9 acres, rather than it getting kind of piecemealed. We've, you know, there were a lot of nights and times when we had to make a decision, do you pay the tuition bill, or do you pay 5676 Oak Green mortgage? And it's been a long project. We've been good friends of the city, donated the walk-in trail in front of the house, you know, a few years back. We're friends of the city, and we hope you look at some of those things. It would be a nice project, we'd be good neighbors, and, you know, the neighbors are important to us, and we hope the neighbors like it as well, so.
No, I appreciate the comments. Thank you for your time, Mr. Junker. All right, do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment on the 5676 Oak Green Avenue North?
Blake, did you want me to make some kind of review of the...
Do you want to review at this point? Yeah, that's good, you, it's got, I think it's...
Yeah, if you want to, wanted at this point, that's fine.
No, that's fine, let's review that, I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. As the chair had indicated, it's a, just a comprehensive plan amendment at this time. We're not dealing with the specifics of the project, the access, the design of the units. Mr. Junker has provided some preliminary design elements, which are intriguing, but again, that is not something that we're, we're getting into tonight. It's just really a comprehensive plan. Look at the comp plan. Back in August of 2022, Mr. Junker was looking at 36 units on this property and a high-density development. As you remember, the planning commission, or those of you who are here, recommended denial, and the planning commission also, or the city council also, did not agree with going to that level of, of density on that property. Also, the property is zoned open space conservation district, so it would require a rezoning. If, for instance, this moves forward, we're looking at this project, we're looking at an R2 low-density zoning for it. Subterranean property is 2.9 acres, it's two parcels right now. Again, the, to the north is 58th Street, to the east is, is Oak Green Avenue. What would be allowed in the current comp plan is six, six units. Medium-density would allow up to 16 units, and high-density up to 28 units. Again, because we're exceeding that, that density with 10 units, just, Jake, have you just got the, the general site plan, you know, just to, to put up? They're looking at essentially 10 units, but in five buildings, and the access for those, again, this has been updated, access would be further away from the intersection of Oak Green and 58th, so it would come, come down further to the south on, on 58th and further to the west on Oak Green, and then further west on 58th Street. And the reason being, with any development of that property, we want to make sure that we're, we're putting those access points as far away from that intersection as possible for safety reasons.
And as a point of clarification, so current zoning would allow six structures?
Well, it, it would have to be rezoned to probably R1 if, if it was going to follow the, the comp plan.
Right, okay.
You know, back in the 2008 plan, this, this property was designated as medium-density. With the Palmer Station development to the, to the east, it was decided to make this property consistent with that and take it to a low-density. So there has been a back and forth. We've always anticipated to be fairly low, lower density, and with 10 units, if that's what indeed moves forward, that's, that's consisted, I think, with that lower end of the, the mid-density or medium-density. Things that you have to consider as you're looking at a comp plan, a comp plan amendment, the land use consistency, especially to the, to the south, the single-family neighborhoods, you have single-family neighborhoods also to the, to the east. Traffic concerns, again, we'll talk a bit more about traffic as we go on, but again, the 10 or a mid-density development is much more positive than 36 units or higher density. Desire to add additional low, medium-density units to the city, we really don't have any developable land left in, you know, Park Heights for low to medium-density, so that this gives us an opportunity to look at again the possibility of development of this property more than just one single-family dwelling. So the, I won't go through the report, the report goes through the criteria, the goals and policies of the comp plan, the, talked a bit about the zoning. What would have happened, let's say the planning commission recommended, the city council approves a, a change to medium-density, this would still have to go through yet another public hearing process, so you would all be notified again, so that if we look at the details of, of any project or any redevelopment, this is essentially going to have to go through some sort of review, again, with public hearing and your input, as well as planning commission, and then city council review. Access, we have a very basic analysis of, of the week, weekday trips, approximately 140 daily weekday trips from the development, anticipating 10 units. The Atkins Traffic Engineer has at least made a preliminary conclusion that that intersection would still operate pretty much as it is with, with that many daily weekday trips. Again, the lower the density, the fewer trips we'll have on that, on that intersection. So there's a, within the conclusion recommendation, last page of my report, it does talk about if you decide to move forward with a, a change to medium-density, we would put a condition on it that if for some reason the project does not, this particular project does not move forward, it would revert back for consideration as, as low-density, which I think is, is reasonable. And then obviously it has to go through a Met Council review, which that's just, for something this minor is a fairly administrative type of thing for the Met Council to do. So any questions at this point from me?
From the commission, have any questions at this point?
I, I'm confused. When I look at your report on page two, it says the 2008 plan, comp plan had medium-density for this area, and then when I look on page four, it says the 2008 plan designated the property as low-density.
Oh, it should have said 2018 on page four, sorry about that.
There's a one missing.
Yeah, I got a one, I got a zero instead of one, yeah. Thank you. Also, Ed is here from Stantec, he's our traffic engineer. Again, if you have it, I don't know if he needs to make a presentation, but if you have any questions for him, he's, he's available, unless you intended on, on saying a few words.
We appreciate you being here tonight, Ed, for, we may have some questions on this one come up, and we may have some on the next one, too. So thank you for your time.
Yep.
Do we have any other questions from anyone on the committee at this, or the commission at this point? Do we have any questions or comments from the public that would like to come up to the podium? Please state your name, your address, and please keep your comments between three and five minutes, please. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Jean Smith, I live in Palmer Station. I have one question specifically regarding the change in the density from 2018 to whenever they said it was medium, medium-density back to low-density. Why was it changed from medium-density to low-density? What was the thought process there?
Do you want me to answer that?
Could you answer that?
Yeah, with the, you know, 10-year gap, the Met Council requires us to update our comprehensive plans every 10 years. It was originally medium-density, again, with the, your development with the Palmer Station, and that being developed as low-density, the, the thought was in 2018 that 58th Street would be that, an appropriate transition between the low-density to the senior housing, higher-density or high-density to the north. But again, with, when you're at 10, let's say 10 units versus the six that it's allowed, you're much closer in what a low to medium-density would be than, you know, 36 units, which is essentially over the, the limit of what high-density should be, so, you know, that was kind of the thought. And any of those, and you were on the...
I was on the planning commission at the time, and it was discussed, ad nauseam about this, and I, I think the decision for low-density was, was made with a great deal of thought, discussion, argument, and everything else, so I think it was, and I think it was because of believing that that was an odd-shaped piece of property, and when you looked at it as it was then, when we did the comp plan, and when you look at it today, it does not look like, outside, outside of the quotes renderings, it does not look like a piece of property that, number one, was kept up very well, and number two, would, would be anything but low-density, be good for anything but low-density housing.
So is it also considered open space at this point?
Yes.
Where the zoning is, yes.
Zoning?
Yep.
So if it's zoned open space, doesn't it have to stay open?
No, with the next step, let's say this moves forward, part of the plan unit development review would be a rezoning from open space to, let's say, the R2, if that's what's, what moves forward. So with the open space, you can, essentially the only permitted use in open space is single-family units, so you could, but you really need to zone it to... The thought with the open space was when the city of Oak Park Heights had a lot of annexed land from B-Town Township, that that was a holding zone for future development, that we would hold on that zoning till at one point that we, we changed the zoning to be appropriate for the comp plan and the land use, so it was just kind of a holding zone in that, that case.
Okay, I'm new to the city, wondering how often does rezoning take place? Is it a common thing?
As we've spoken about earlier tonight, we don't have a lot of buildable property within Oak Park Heights. We are more or less a completely built-out city, so when you don't have lots of un... We are more or less a completely built-out city, so when you don't have lots of unbuilt open space, it doesn't happen very often, but that's a unique situation for this city. In other areas and other cities that have more open space or unused buildable properties, I think it's a more common occurrence. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I'm Vicki Gagey, I live at 1396456th Street North. We back up to the property that they're discussing. We've lived here for 25 years, this wasn't even here at the time, nor were any of the other roads that were there, along with 58th Street. They put that 150-foot buffer in there to keep the density away from us, also with it being, at this time, considered open space, which to me, I consider it R1. That's what it needs to stay, that's what the comprehensive plan did at 2018, and that's what needs to happen. R1, that's what I believe. We have been through these meetings many times, and it just gets to be old after a while, and you just want it done, but you want it done the way it should be done, the way you've been promised for many years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dick Gagey, I live at 1396456th Street, my better half, for sure. My problem with this is, this meeting is talking about a comprehensive plan. There is no development that should be considered, okay? And we know that the last time, in August of 2022, we had meetings prior to any development plan going in, and at that time, it started out, there were, and I'll get the numbers wrong, but you'll understand where I'm coming from, the first plan we saw was around 24 units. When it came to the city, it was over 30 units. Now, you have open space, it's R1, basically, six houses, Scott brought it up. If you change it to R2, low, medium-density, that allows for four-plex unit buildings, and there could be up to 16 units put into that. So, that can't handle 16. It, you know, so, the plan that's being brought forward should not even be a consideration. It needs to stay what it is unless there's a plan attached to it, because as Mr. Junker said, the property is for sale. So, it gets approved, he gets an offer from another company, and guess what? They can put 16 units in there now, because that's what the comprehensive plan was changed to. So, I'm adamantly opposed to it. I would, if they were single-family houses in a configuration like was shown there, then I'd say, yeah, that's what should get built there, you know? So, instead of duplexes, if they were single-family, there could be six of them in there instead of the five that are proposed today. So, thank you.
Appreciate your time. Do we have anyone else from the public that would like to comment tonight? Feel free to summarize, sir. Please introduce yourself.
Dave Harview, LaBelle Real Estate Group, I live at 8218 Lori Lane in Woodbury, and we just moved there a year ago. I've lived, grown up, and still have it my whole life. I've been working with Mr. Junker for the last couple of months on this project. I had nothing to do the two years ago, and I guess to try to clarify, the five buildings, 10 units, I think the positive with that, there's only two driveway cuts. My understanding, and I'm not a developer, but a little bit of looking at the city code and the current zoning of low-density, single-family, it's one to three, you know, lots per acre. I don't know what Scott and I have any discussion with it, the six number comes up, but I guess my understanding is that it could be seven or eight and still fit within that low-density. But immaterial, if this doesn't go forward, I guess another option that could happen is that we go ahead and plat it with six or seven single-family homes, and you have six or seven driveways between Oak Green Avenue and 58th Street. And my understanding is that that would fit the current zoning and the current conditions. As far as the size, the 10 units, basically with the current land, given average lot-sized, if you were to divide the acre to the square footage by 10, of over 12,500 square feet per unit. And lots on 56th Street, nine of those are just 10,800, you know? So, basically, the density on that parcel will be less dense than the property on 56th Street. So, I think the city's got to decide where they want to go and what they want to do. Mr. Junker's proposed, which I said, by combining both and doing this, it takes care of everything. The old house is gone, you now have this developed, and my understanding with the change in zoning, it's conditioned on this plan going in. So, it's not selling it to somebody else who's going to come in and throw up, you know, four-plexes. But, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer to the best of my ability.
Commission, do you have any questions?
Were you the one that did the renderings?
No, I had nothing to do with that. Mr. Junker had already had that and had spent time with that, and so, like I said, I'm not a developer, I'm a licensed real estate agent, and I gave Jamie my thoughts on that and how it could be presented to the staff and now the planning commission. But no, it's not my plan.
I guess my only concern would be like the person before him was saying where something hap, yeah, where the, excuse me, oh, sorry.
Unless you want to ask him a question?
No.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your time. All right, do we have any other comments from the-
Good evening, my name is Velisa Caspers, I've been living for the last 24 years at 1395056th Street North. My home also backs up to this development. I have one question before I maybe make some comments. Could you comment about the parking? Because it looks to me like there's two garage spaces per garage and then another 10 parking spaces. So, there'd be room for 30 cars coming in and out of this development if the parking was full, if I got that right. And I'm concerned about light pollution, since Highway 36 has gone in and our wonderful senior development communities in the area and lows, we've seen all of this. In the last 20 years, we get plenty of sound pollution, and light pollution is a real concern. I'd much rather see six driveways and 12 cars potentially shining their lights into my backyard than 30. And I know I have neighbors around me that may feel the same way. I'm opposed to the comprehensive plan amendment, and I'm opposed to any plan that looks like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public?
Did they confirm the parking?
Tonight, today, this meeting, this is not-
The way this looks, is it 30 parking spots?
Mrs. Caspers, today, this is not a completed finalized plan for Mr. Junker. The conversation at stake tonight is we are talking about the zoning of the property, and conditionally, he would have to present a finalized plan, correct?
That's correct.
At a later date. So, we are talking about the density tonight. Okay?
And one thing to mention, too, is that we're only doing comp plan, and it still requires a rezoning. So, again, we have, as a city, a lot of power over steering what type of development it's going to be with the zoning approvals. So, again, the city is not giving up everything with just doing a comprehensive plan review, there's still going to be a lot of checks and balances out there.
Yep, so, agree, thank you for the clarification. So, there are still a lot of checks. Okay, Mr. Junker?
Great, it's a good question, could I just take 10 seconds and answer it? It's a fair question on the parking.
Yep, let's keep it under two minutes, please.
It'd be less than, it's a really good question, what we did-
Talk into the mic so we can have it on record.
What we did to make it just more definable, we, if you look at the garages, we just asked the designer to draw the parking stripes outside the garages, so when you count, as you did, which was correct, the cars are intended to be parked in the garage, but then it shows their parking spot outside, which they shouldn't be there because they're in the garage. So-
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Junker, for the clarification. Do you have any additional comments?
My name is Susan Cleary, I live also on 56th Street, I'm budding up to this property proposal or change or whatever you want to call it. I have just a couple of comments. One, I walked that area today again, I noticed that the house is set back from 58th Street quite a bit. I don't know what the original policy for Oak Park Heights is, but when I walk the neighborhoods, all of our houses are set back fairly far, and this is going to be a pretty busy street, this 58th Street. I'm just wondering, you know, how does that fit in? Also, when I walk, especially in the springtime, that whole lower end of that property floods. I don't know how usable that is, or maybe you know about it, I don't even know that. I'd just like to mention that as well. I think, you know, it would be a wise use of land to, you know, keep our wild land right there, keep our moisture-based ground, and maybe just adapt around that to be sure. I just don't want to see all of that pushed away and then we deal with an even bigger flooding problem in the future. And then, secondly, just, I'm worried about the setback for these proposals. It seems to me like the house that's there currently has a lot of green space, and it makes it very livable, and, I mean, we all enjoy the little kitschy stuff that goes on there all year long. I guess I'd have to go with, I'm more in favor of less is more on this site, I don't think that we need to fill it up with a lot of people and a lot of life. I'd like to see it just be a little bit smaller. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Cleary. Do we have any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
So, I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Do I have any additional discussion, otherwise I would call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing for Jamie Junker, J and K, or group, LLP, is now closed. Who would like to go first?
Go ahead, Mr. Cleary.
Again, this is just talking about the comprehensive plan. However, it is very difficult to separate that from what we've been provided with by showing, aren't these nice houses, aren't they just going to enhance the neighborhood and everything? So, it's hard to step back and just think about this as a high, or a medium or low-density. With that in mind, I think it's important to note, for example, that the renderings that we've all been given and looked at are at best misleading. The renderings show 58th Street as being a totally flat street where you can walk right up to the, right up to the house, as somebody said, the setbacks looks like it's about seven feet. Sidewalk is nice and straight and flat. As we all know, those of us who live around here, that land on one end is at least six feet higher than the sidewalk, and this does not, doesn't really show that. In addition, when you talk about, when you look at the renderings from above, it shows all these wonderful, healthy trees that would be a buffer between the 56th and this property. And I walked through there again today, actually yesterday, and I was trying to find one healthy tree. And the property is, still has, for the last 20-some years that we've lived here, still has the debris from, construction debris laying on the property. The point is that to somehow say this is going to be and show us what it's going to be like, we need to disavow ourselves of the pictures that are being shown, and that should enter into our decision about whether or not this should be low-density or medium-density.
So, that being said, I think that was well-spoken, Mr. Cleary.
I still have some more. The other thing is, we've talked about, this is being, and Scott's report, it talks about being a transition between the high-density across 58th and the low-density on 56th. Again, 58th is a good divider between the low-density and the high-density. This, I don't think would add anything to that. The other thing is, when 58th Street was developed to senior housing, one of the conditions was no more entrances on 58th or on Oak Green, and there aren't any. And, you know, to say, well, with medium-density, we're not going to really add any, we're not going to add any entrances, we're going to add traffic. And, again, those of us that live close to 58th and walk along 58th, that's, to put it bluntly, damn busy. And adding 140 cars may not seem like much to those that don't live in Oak Park Heights, but those of us that do live in Oak Park Heights, it is, and I think that affects whether this should or should not be low-density. Finally, it seems to me that we spent tons of hours, and if I remember correctly, the city spent like $160,000 on its comp plan, and after hours and hours of discussion, we came up with this to be low-density, it seems to me that, at least I haven't seen anything that would, which, should, we should change. Thank you, I'm sorry I talked so much.
No, you're good, Mr. Cleary, I think that's well-spoken. Jennifer, I think you had some comments?
Well, I just feel, I think it's much better than the other plan that he came with a couple of years ago, and I feel like, I mean, it's his property, can't he develop it to a certain point how he wants it? It's kind of like he's in a catch-22 where, you know, he can make some decisions, and it was true, can't he put six houses in there and then have six different driveways? Can you not do that? Is that wrong?
The density would allow for six units.
Yeah, so-
You know, the city would have the ultimate review over the site plan and the subdivision and whether we would want to do some sort of coordinated, you know, driveways. Again, we probably don't want more than two, one on 58th, one on Oak Green, even if it is just six units, just because we want to keep that intersection as clean as possible.
And it's currently zoned as open space right now, so they'd need the rezoning-
They would need the rezoning.
-for that to occur.
And then, my other comment would be, if there's such a concern with it, why don't they purchase the land and, as a group, and keep it as however they want as a green space?
I was thinking the same thing. I mean, if we want to keep it green space, I do feel a little bit that it's the individual who purchased the property X number of years ago has a right to develop that property as long as it's within the comp plan. And to me, this- And to me, this preliminary proposal, although it is not a proposal and it is not a finalized plan, shows a option that would make that property potentially usable property in the community when we have very little developable land. It's not 34 units like it was before. It's 10, which would be lower than, it's low end of the medium density because I think medium's up to 16 if I'm incorrect, right, Mr. Richards?
Yeah.
16, right? So it's a low end. Square footage-wise, at least we can't look at that at this point. But if it was comparable, the single-family units, we're not talking a lot of additional square footage. And it allows for something to be put on that property. Because it's, like you said, it's Darty. It's, uh, Armus Van Dyke. It's, you know, it's his right to develop it and it's his land at this point. Otherwise, it's for sale. It is a property that's actively listed currently.
But I mean, I understand what Jim's saying. It's not that beautiful, flat picture either. And it sounds like there was issues with flooding and I had questions about the infrastructure there and how much more that can take as far as if it does flood and the water that goes in and out and comes in and out of that. So, I mean, I guess my only other suggestion would be to, instead of rezoning it, the medium density, just cut back on some of those townhouses. Like, I'm assuming that's not cost-effective, but...
Well, I think, I think it's not a finished plan at this point.
Sure, sure. That's my own opinion.
It's a preliminary conversation we're having, right?
I feel like it's difficult to put a vote to this without having a more formal plan, you know? Grading, there's going to be a lot of earthwork, you know, DNR, who knows what goes into that, maybe nothing. But there could be more variables to it than putting tax tonight.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Nelson, that's a good, a good point.
You know, the staff considered, do we wait for Mr. Junker to develop more, you know, spend additional money, develop more specific plans? Or do we really put the comp plan up first like we did the last time to see, you know, a check with the planning commission and city council to see what they would think? So it was a decision that we went back and forth on, but ultimately, this is the way we decided to go. And, you know, with, with any, you know, with any development, we're going to have to look at grading plans and so forth. And maybe, maybe this doesn't work with the, with the, with the, with what's out there, so we'll...
Well, I think staff's recommendation again is if this, if we do entertain to move forward with an adjustment, and again, I want to clarify for everyone in the room that this is just a recommendation. It still goes to the city council for them to vote on and decide. We are just the recommending body. I think that we would put contingencies on it that it would, if it was sold to another person, I would...
That's what I...
It would revert back to the original zoning and that it would have to stay under X number of units.
Original land use.
Right.
Well, no, I think we're using land use and zoning. It's difficult, but just to make sure that that's clear.
But I meant, like, we could put contingencies on 10 units too, if something's stopping us from doing that.
Yeah, if that's possible, I would like to see that because with the potential of this turning into 16 units, I fear that I would want to not approve it at that point.
Yeah.
And that is, Mr. Chair, too, just related to that comment, that is, City Planner Richards has that as condition number one in the recommendation about this. You know, if it doesn't work out, that it would revert back to, you know, the, the low density from a land use perspective.
I don't call out 10 units and maybe that's a good idea. How do you feel about that, Jacob? That what we say is, and site plan approval for the property also is contingent, but...
I think being more specific would, would help, yeah.
I mean, I think 10 units personally, and I think the two access points minimum. But we even talked about one access point potentially, so...
Just buying my time. So I think that's the perfect tangent is it looks like five. It fits within five. Why not five proper instead of 10 units? It's five proper homes. He's already talking about a condominium association, which is, in this case, an HOA. You have one driveway out the back entering to five homes. It stays as is. Maybe it switches to R1 instead of open space. Nothing would change in that regard. The risk of the density and the specificity is definitely present in the current layout. But it doesn't seem like that big of a leap to go from 10 proper units, keeping the five buildings that are there, but treat them as five individual homes. It's bridging the line between the different neighborhoods and Mr. Junker is still able to develop the land as, not as far as he is expecting, but...
So five single-family homes sharing driveways?
Why not?
Basically, what you're saying is to leave it as is.
Well, leaving the comp plan as is, but merging what we're seeing in front of us as a proposed idea, which congratulations, you guys have done phenomenal, going from two years ago till now. The, the concept is great. Still needs a little more time to bake. But it seems like there's an easy next step and have a single driveway with five spaces sharing the same road to get into the back or whichever direction.
But again, tonight's to talk about the comp plan. We're not here to break down what's in front of us. We're looking at the comp plan. What's on the table is, are we comfortable with staff's recommendation of putting the specifics of the 10 units and allowing him to go to R2?
Yeah, so I think that's what the pin in that sentence is. R1 is probably as far as it seems feasible due to the risk of how R2 is currently defined without all the contingencies until the cows come home.
Yeah, or we put the contingency of a number of units on it.
I like contingencies. Except that, that wouldn't be in the comp plan.
No.
It would be specific for this proposal, for this land. If it moved forward with his finalized proposal, it would be a maximum of 10 units, which would be adjusting of the comp plan, which would be more public hearings. And we talked about that, right? There's more public hearings to be had. We're just a recommending body.
Well, that's the thing is I still think 10 is too high. You're looking at five proper homes, but yeah, you're going to have potentially 20 cars and trailers and boats and campers and... It's more than just 10 units and then you got potential for four bodies per unit.
I mean, I grew up in a house with 12 people in it, so...
But you had a...
I had a family of 10. So it depends on how many cars you want to put in the house. It depends on how many bedrooms there are. Square footage-wise, you can have a lot of people in the house.
A lot of properties in Oak Park Heights are a quarter acre.
Have you, have you walked through this property?
I've driven by it. Okay.
Walked through it.
Okay.
And get a feel. I, I think that's what we all should do is walk through it and get a feel for what this is.
I think that other point that, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, Mr. Agent, Real Estate Agent, was the square footage comparison. You know, in the, I know we're not talking about the design, the, and the concept. I don't think it's comparable to a modern home. You're saying that it's 12,000 square foot per, per person, given the total 2.9 acres divided out, and a normal home in town is 10,000. Well, it's not comparable when you got to see a parking. If you had five individual properties, everybody would have some sort of free space, green yard, kids to play in. I don't know. I'm... It needs to be more well-baked. I definitely agree with that.
I move that we recommend to the city council that the comp plan not be amended.
A second.
Do we have any other additional discussion? I think I'm still with what Ms. Van Dyke said at the beginning. I feel that it's Mr. Junker's right to develop this land. I think this is a fair compromise that is amenable with the traffic studies. I think the city's recommendation, staff's recommendation, puts some protections in place for the specific property. And I feel at some point, this property needs to be developed. I, I feel that Mr. Junker's done a good job this time coming back with an amenable solution for a transitory space. There's still the 150-foot barrier between the housing development on 56th of trees that the city put in place. I think that needs to be taken into consideration. Do we have any other discussion? I would call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What are we, aye and do?
To not, you're not...
Not to change, not to change the comp plan.
Okay. Sorry.
If that's easier, Mr. Chair, I can call a roll.
Yeah, we can call, we can call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Husbey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Nay.
Commissioner Van Dyke?
Aye.
Commissioner Vandemer?
Nay.
So motion carries three to two. The recommendation to the city council will be not to change the zoning from low to medium. Again, this is just the planning commission's recommendation. The city council is the final deciding body and that will go before the city council on June 25th. Right? I think. Is that correct? It's what, it's what's on my piece of paper, but I want to make sure that's when it's going to actually go before them, right?
That's right.
I believe, I believe that, yes, that is correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Seven o'clock, right here.
Six, six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock here. So I just wanted to say that, very clear again, that is just the recommendation of the planning commission to the city council. The city council will make the final decision. All right? Very good?
Very good.
All right.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everyone. You can stay with the next one. We've got the next one or you can sneak out the back. So anyone who wants to sneak out, I'll give you a few minutes. And then if anyone wants to stay, we're going to move on. Guys, when you sneak out, go outside so you don't make too much noise in the lobby. Or we could close those doors.
Might have to close the doors.
All right, let's move on to the next item on our agenda tonight. It's the Hampton Companies at the Heights.
Tell Mary Beth to close. They say, Mary Beth, please close the doors.
They got it.
Isn't that listening to you?
They are here tonight to consider a request for the comp plan amendment to change the land use classification of the commercial use to residential slash traditional use, rezoning from open space to B4 limited district, permanent, final plat, conditional permits next to the Menards on 58th Street. Let's start with your report, Mr. Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Again, our chair went through the, the different elements of approval. This is one of those properties that is also zoned open space. And again, there's very few left within the city. Again, that was considered a holding district. You know, it seems like a lot of different approvals, but that is pretty standard for this type of development. It would be an 81-unit market rate apartment referred to as the Heights. And it would be between Menards and the Oak Park Ponds Shopping Center. Again, Oak Park Ponds Shopping Center is anchored by the Kowalski's Grocery Store. The, just going through a few of the elements, comprehensive plan in 2018, this area was designated as commercial. It had been consistently planned for commercial for a number of years. And the residential development proposing is not consistent with that, that comp plan amendment. So we go to a residential business transitional and go through the criteria that describes that. The areas to the south, you have a, a single-family, low-density neighborhood, but you have essentially commercial on, on other sides of this, with the Menards to the west, Oak Park Ponds. And then there is some future developable land also owned by the same property owner to the north. Talk a little bit about the change in land use classification. We're seeing a lot of infill development of multiple family within commercial-type areas right now. Seems to be a trend. A lot of them, especially in more densely populated areas, you have commercial on first level and, and residential above. This district anticipates that as an option, but also allows as conditional use permit just to do a, a full residential development. Looking at, you know, the transition of, of land uses, whenever we have the ability to provide a transition with maybe a higher density, medium density between the low density and the, and the, the, the commercial, that's always positive. I know there was concern when the Menards went in with the neighborhood to the south, Autumn Ridge, that again, plenty of fencing and screening. Again, with, with this development, even though it is residential, higher density, but residential nonetheless, they are providing Birmingham landscaping. You know, fairly good job with screening that. The density allowances, there's about 6.6, 0.06 acres with 81 units. The density is 13.5 units per acre, which is a medium density, but is consistent with the residential business transitional land use classification. We felt instead of taking this to like a, a high density or a mid-density, that the residential business transitional land use classification fit, fit that better. Again, zone currently open space conservation with anticipation that that would be rezoned. Always was anticipated. And rezoned to be for a limited business district, which allows multiple family units as a conditional use. Again, seemed to be a good transitional element also. The zoning was always anticipated to be B2. B2 is our most intense commercial zoning district. Allows for gas stations, other high-intensity uses. The B4 is, is much more restrictive in a lot of the, especially those automotive uses. And we do have the sensitivity to the traffic we're putting on 58th Street. This property is, is on a, on a curve, site distance is something that we've looked at with this and just the amount of, of density. Putting a quick trip on this, in this property, you know, under the current comprehensive plan designation for commercial is probably not a good idea. But with 81 units, you have a lot fewer trips per day. Again, it's part of the things we looked at as we're looking at that considerations. The density requirements, as indicated, are met. A total of a little over 200 square feet of lot area is required to achieve those 81 units and they have 264, over 264,000 square feet. Subdivide, subdivision, this is designated currently or plotted as an outlot. They're taking it to Oak Park Heights Apartments as a preliminary and final plat required to, again, for development. Park dedication connection fees, unfortunately, we just lost our long-term finance director and I didn't nab her to, to, to take a look at this. I believe and we'll be talking to, as we, the staff looks at this further, if this moves forward, to look and, and talk to the developer. I believe that all the park dedication fees were originally paid for this property. Whether the connection fees were paid or not, we'll have to take, have to take another look at that. And if you have proof of that, Jim, you know, you can help us out with that. That'd be great. Setbacks, our three districts specify setback requirements of 30 feet front yard, 30 feet rear yard and 20 foot side yard setback. Because this building is slightly over 35 feet, the, there is, the setback requirement increases from 30 feet to, to 30 feet. And the front and rear setbacks increase to 40 feet. We do have on the east side, a 24-foot side yard setback and a 36-foot side yards setback to the west. So we do need to look at a conditional use permit for that 24-foot side yard setback to the east. Minimum four areas are all met, proposed street access. We're looking at, talking, in talking further to the, Jacob has talked to... We're looking at, talking, in talking further to the, Jacob has talked to the owners of the Oak Park, or at least the management team of Oak Park Ponds, they would allow a limited access or would allow access from that development. We've, the report anticipated would just be emergency vehicle access. That's something that we can further define as this moves forward. But again, that's positive. The one thing that the Oak Park Ponds development didn't want was that being the major access point to the west. With the access point to the south onto 58th Street, and that working from a traffic standpoint, you know, that is less of a concern for that developer. There was a supplemental agreement with the outlot development. Again, the staff, the city attorney has looked at it, and that no access to the west is required to allow development of the subject site. That, that's something we've considered for a number of years and what the interpretation of that supplemental agreement is, but I think we are comfortable with what, with where we're at right now, that not all, the primary access has to go west through that Kowalski's development. That created a whole number of issues on its own in terms of the development. We do have a traffic memo from the Atkins Traffic Engineer, and then Ed from StanTech has also provided some information. I'll let him get into it if you have questions, but he feels that the level of service or the, that indicates that all intersections and movements, both with and without the proposed development work with the proposed access on 58th Street. And the site distances also with this development and with where the accesses at are found to be adequate for the proposed location on 58th Street. The, Ed Eisner of the, the fire chief of the Bay Harbor Fire Department has looked at it. They made some tweaks, and the plan meets all attorney movements. Trail sidewalks, again, they have a good system internally to the, to the site for, to the proposed play area, parking, building, all that interconnected. Sidewalk continues along 58th Street to the east property line for potential future connection. I don't believe that's planned, but at least that is shown on their plans for a possible future connection. Gazebo play structure area, they have that, you can see that on the site plans, but that hasn't been defined with definite plans, but they have identified that on the site plan. City Arbors has reviewed the tree preservation landscaping. I mentioned before the screening of berm. There's a berm on the south and southwest sides of the site to screen the building from the residential properties to the south. They have a fairly significant plantings on those berms and in that area. So again, it'll give a more residential feel for the people who live in the building, as well as provide some screening to the neighbors to the south, as they discussed with Menards many years ago, to make sure that, you know, there's a good transition back and forth between those properties. Grading drainage, the city engineer has reviewed that and has comments in a report. Parking stalls are more than met. Again, with the more recent changes to our parking standards, we lowered it to one parking space per unit. They have two parking spaces, so they're well over with the requirements, but requires just a conditional use permit review. Lighting, lighting plan has been provided. All the light fixtures are full cut off, the photometric plans check out with, so that we don't have glare onto neighboring properties, especially to the, to the south. Signage, there's a sign plan included in the rather modest plan for signs at the front at 58th Street. Building height, the building is slightly over the building height requirement of 35 feet. Again, not unusual for these buildings. Beltwells had to go through a conditional use permit also for all the, for all their buildings, but it's not, you know, it's not 50, 60 feet, it's slightly over the 35 feet. Doesn't require design guidelines, that's more of a commercial standard, but it did provide the standards within the ordinance related to more or less character, mass and scale, breaking up mass and scale, which this building does with their design. B4 limited business districts, went through those also in review, the conditional use permit criteria. Finally, if a development agreement is required by our city attorney, they'll work with the developer's agreement, possibly for stormwater ponding, possibly for connection fees, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a list in my conclusion recommendation on page 13 of my report that talks about the conditional use permits required for this, as well as the comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning to B4, and the site plan design review under the zoning norms. Any questions? There's a lot to kind of digest with this one, so.
Commissioner, do we have any questions for Mr. Richards at this point?
So the driveway to Oak Park Ponds is not needed by the fire chief or any EMS first responders. Under your recommendation, it's saying it's not needed, but if we, if they put one in, it would need to be gated. Was that the?
That was the original thought. Now, Jacob has talked a little bit more to the Oak Park Ponds manager or owner, I'm not certain what capacity that they are in. Maybe you can fill us in what their.
Yeah, Commissioner Housby, the owner, in my conversation with the owner of that development, they're open to that being a full access. Within the plans, what you see with the plan set here, it's listed as the emergency access for final approval and review by the city engineer. So that was a conversation that I had had after the packet already went out, which is why that comment's not included in the packet.
All right, I'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant if they'd like to address the commission first, and then we'll.
My name is Joel Larson. I'm the president of Hampton Companies. Thank you, Mr. Richardson, for your presentation. Good evening. I'm here mainly to answer any questions. I'll fill in a couple spots that maybe we were, we blew over quickly or missed. It is a market rate apartment building, so our rents are going to be around $17 to $2,200 for that, depending on what type of a unit the people pick. There's common space in the building, community room, there's some outside decking in the back for the residents to use. We're proposing a playground area for the kids to be able to kick a ball around or play on a jungle gym or whatever we put out there. There's a gazebo. So yeah, we're excited. We do have selections as far as brick, stone, siding, roofing, that kind of stuff. If people want to see that, we'd be happy to show that. So it's very important. I'm going to own the building also, not just build it and develop it, but I'm the owner of it, so I want to make sure this is done right, and, because it is part of my, part of my deal. One of the comments that was made, I did talk to Kurt Hoffman, who is the owner of the property that Kowalski's is in, in regards to the, this access point through their property. And in theory, we've come to some understanding of what we're going to do. His comments to me were that they don't want it to be their main entrance, but we can use that. We're going to help share with the maintenance of that. We'll do an agreement between us, between the two property owners, to make sure that that's written and taken care of, but we have an understanding of what we're going to do with that. So with that, I'm just going to sit down again, and then I can come up and answer any other questions or.
I have one comment or question that I wanted to read for everyone in the room tonight. We did receive a letter from Menards.
Okay.
Just basically acknowledging that you're well aware that Menards is an active lumberyard, and there will be additional noise because you're looking at a building next door, right? So I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, Menards sent us a note saying that they operate a retail store in a lumberyard in the adjacent parcel, while Menards shares in the desire for growth, prosperity, and continue developing the city of Oak Park Heights. The operation of Menards store like that of similar large retail establishments generates noise, traffic, and lights. They just wanted that, to make sure that everyone was aware of that. So I just wanted to put that out there, that we do have that in front of us tonight.
You're welcome. No problem.
Well, and I think it's easy for us to kind of ignore that, but I'm on the committee for Lake Elmo Airport, and they get, you know, they've been there for God knows how many years.
How many years?
And there's people that continually complain and want it closed down because it's too, they get 10,000 complaints, 7,000 of those from four households. So the point is that, you know, when people move into your apartment, I think you're, you know, they need to be aware of that.
Yep, we'll make sure the marketing people point out the window and say, there's a store there, so.
As.
I don't know what else to say.
It'll be handy for buying, but it's.
Yeah, right, I get you.
Just so you're aware.
Yep, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to make sure it was aware and on the record, so appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Yes, you want to show us the materials?
Thank you.
Sure, I'm going to let one of the other guys kind of do that. I had some foot surgery. Did you have a foot question?
No, I was looking for the material, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thought you guys were hiding them.
All right. Open siding, it's an LP smart side material, so it's not a vinyl, it's a nice sturdy.
I'm sorry, if we could have you introduce yourself.
My name's Jeremy Larson, I'm here on behalf of Hampton Companies as well, but for siding, this is an LP smart side, heavy-duty siding, holds up really well to weather conditions, and over time doesn't sag, anything like that. We have an architectural-grade shingle, pretty standard for residential and commercial buildings. In addition to the LP smart side, we have a cultured stone that we'll be putting on the building as well.
Show that to the public.
Yes, there's the stone. Single. You guys are welcome to look at this as well, the LP smart side.
So in there, just to clarify, there's, so there won't be used, like, concrete block? I mean, it would be the stone and the siding?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, next to the garage entrance, you may see a little bit of concrete block or break-up block. But yeah, we're going to, like I said earlier, we want to make this look good.
Thank you.
Oh, Jacob, did you want to show maybe, maybe you were when I was giving my report, but maybe the site plan, and maybe we can point out a few things for the.
Yeah, I think it's like.
Yeah. So, yeah, as you look at the TV screens, to the right is access off of 58th Street. So the building is one long, narrow building, but broken up, you know, in a L shape, angled shape. The berming and landscaping goes really in between the building and 58th Street. Parking is hidden off to the back, and there is additional land with this development. It's under the, under the high lines, so really not developable, but, and the play area and gazebo go up front, so the two rectangles in front, yeah, Jacob's got that shown, would be that gazebo kind of sitting area and then the play area. Just to give you some orientation of what.
And that building to the east, that's actually the fence line on Menards and their structure, that's the tin structure, right?
That's a property line.
Yeah, that's a solid building right there. There's no storage on the outside of that building.
If you've got some elevation stuff, those are a little hard to read, but.
All right.
Is there any kind of picture?
Ma'am, could you, if you'd like to, could you please come to the front and state your name and address, and then ask your question or address the commission?
My name's Bobby Tyge, and I live at 5795, which is the corner of Newberry Avenue North. I want to know how close that driveway is to the corner of my house, because it's already terribly difficult to get out of there, especially if you're pulling anything. The traffic along there is not conducive to starting to put a lot of other traffic that close. Now, if you can convince us all, which I'm assuming most of the people here are from our neighborhood, I would guess, we're relatively new. We bought that house because we liked where it was, we liked Oak Park Heights, we looked at houses in Stillwater, but we really liked where we were going to be able to live and the closeness to things like Menards. But it's become kind of a nightmare in a lot of ways, the amount of traffic. If you want to come and stay at my house a couple times, come on over. The police have told me multiple times when I've talked to them, oh, we patrol that. We know how fast cars are going because it's recording it at that 40 miles an hour. You hit that curve, those kids from high school, they're not going 40, I can guarantee you that. I'd love to sit, and I'd volunteer to sit with a radar gun. I have a brother-in-law who's a sheriff. I would sit there on the corner with the radar gun and record what kind of traffic. This last weekend, I'm sure a lot of those cars were probably doing close to 50. Now you tell me how we're all going to get in and out safely when you say there's only 81 units and it's not going to be that much traffic in and out of there. I'm sorry, I don't agree with you. I watch, when I come down, I stay in the far-right lane, I slow way down, I'm doing less than 20 with my blinker on, for fear that someone's going to rear-end me to turn into Newberry. I don't think I'm the only person that has that kind of concern from my neighborhood. And then we hear that you're going to, the potential that, I don't know who controls that street, because I asked that at the picnic last year when we were new residents. I asked the cops that. Well, we don't control the speed on that street. 40 is too fast. I'm sorry, somebody needs to address that, and I don't know who that is, but somebody does, and if you think you're going to start adding a lot of other traffic to that, I think we've got a bigger problem, especially when the high school lets out. The cops sit in the parking lot at the high school, they're not on the curve watching that traffic come around. They pass that 40 mile an hour sign, and they're gunning it. Come on over sometime, sit on my corner.
Thank you. Maybe if you would mind speaking to the traffic study, we have a pretty extensive traffic study done here. I think it sounds like that might be a common question, we can maybe get ahead of that, if you would mind?
Sure. Do you have a specific question?
Just kind of summarize what we're looking at with the additional traffic and why we think it would be acceptable for this applicant to construct this facility with the additional traffic on 58th.
Sure. So the traffic study looked at the number of trips that would be generated by this development based on standard trip generation information. That was applied to the existing volumes, they actually collected new turn movement volumes on the street at multiple intersections that we requested. They assign those trips to the roadway system to develop traffic forecasts that account for not only this development, but other development in the area, look at a future situation, and determine the level of service for the intersections. The level of service is based on the amount of delay that vehicles encounter during those peak hours. There are standards for level of service A through F, A being the least amount of delay down to F, which is the most amount of delay. Typically, level of service D is the level where, the lowest level acceptable, if you get below that, you start to look at, you know, what needs to be done to improve these intersections to account for development. What the report shows is that with this development, other background growth, all the intersections that were looked at have acceptable levels of service. Now, that doesn't mean there isn't any delay at those intersections, there is delay during the peak hours. I mean, there's no question about that, but there are standards that are looked at. Not everything can be level of service A all the time. So there are standards that are for intersections for the amount of delay, and these intersections honestly are within those standards and is still being acceptable. So that's what the report showed. The other piece was the site distance. There are standards that Ashto and MinDOT have for intersection site distance, where vehicles both turning out of the site and into the site need to be able to see other vehicles on the roadway and have enough distance, site distance, to safely turn onto the roadway, or other vehicles see them as they're turning onto the roadway. And based on where this is located, on the outside of the curve, those site distance requirements are met at this location. So that's really the summary of the study. They did also bring up the idea of converting 58th Street to a three-lane roadway. Currently, it's four-lane, undivided, which that particular design has kind of fallen out of. Currently, it's four-lane, undivided, which that particular design has kind of fallen out of favor in some locations because of safety issues that can occur. And the safety issues are really, the concern really is with vehicles slowing down to turn into this driveway, vehicles behind them have to, you know, slow down or move out of that lane. And so, that's the, that's where, anytime you introduce a new access anywhere along this roadway, you're going to run into that situation, not only here, but anywhere else, and even at existing intersections, like you spoke about, at Newberry. If someone is behind you and you're turning, you have to, you know, they have to slow down, and that creates a situation where there is an opportunity for a crash. Now, the crash history has been low in this corridor, there really hasn't been a need to look at that type of layout, but it is something that could be considered, it would take a lot more effort than has been put out so far to do that. It would need to be a feasibility study and some additional study to figure that out. But that has been introduced in this, and it's something maybe to consider in the future if this corridor continues to, development continues to occur.
Would that be eastbound or westbound that would get constricted?
It would be the entire, both directions. So, you'd go from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction with a center-left turn lane. And then you'd have space on this, you know, on the outsides for either a striped shoulder or a bike lane.
Ah, true.
It's called a, it's called a road diet, and it does happen. There's been locations in Plymouth where they've gone from four lanes down to three, and it works in the right location. I'm not saying this is the right location, but it is a possibility for a four-lane undivided in the right situation. And really, the advantage is you get those left turns out of the through lane, and you create a space for them to turn without the other vehicles having to slow down.
And the through lane, right, would have, I mean, that would be up to the city to change the speed, but you'd almost need to change or decrease the speed in that diet scenario?
Potentially, I mean, not necessarily, it really would depend on the situation. Once again, changing the speed limit doesn't change people's, doesn't change the way they drive.
Plus, that's the state, 58th is state-run.
Well, it's a city, city.
No, it's a city street, but the.
State sets a speed limit, the original speed limit. Now, the city can petition to have that changed, and there are other things that can be done, but my point is, just changing the speed limit doesn't change how fast people go. So, that's, that's an enforcement issue primarily, but it's also the way the roadway was designed. It was designed for 40 miles an hour, so that's, that's the way that it's, that it was originally set, and that's, you know, that's the way people drive.
So, is there, is there a way to answer her question?
Which was?
Which was, how, how can she get out, get out of her driveway without taking her life in her own hands?
Sure, I can answer it.
No, I think, I think the answer was that we put a lot of time and effort into this traffic study, and the traffic study resulted in that with the additional units proposed, it's still within the acceptable means with like-minded roads within the state of Minnesota and the Twin City Metropolitan. Is that an accurate statement?
That's correct, yes.
That's a correct statement.
And just, just to confirm, just to confirm, just to confirm, it was a traffic study that was done by the developers' team that then our traffic engineer reviewed and is commenting on now.
Correct. High school was in session when the data was collected, yes.
Can I ask you a question about the figures that you'd add or that were?
I didn't create the figures.
He didn't do it.
Nope.
He reviewed the data.
Reviewed them, so with your review, between figure five and figure eight, if we look at the bottom center bubble, it's calling out that intersection at Newberry, figure five, for example, is saying peak PM traffic is 5:28 going eastbound, if the development wasn't done. And then if we go to the same bubble on figure eight, it's saying peak PM traffic, still going eastbound right in front of Newberry, is 5:31, so potentially between not building a building to building a building, it's only going up three or four trips, whether it's AM or PM, if I'm interpreting that correctly.
That, that's what the figure shows, yes, that's what they, that's what the forecast showed.
Okay.
Should probably be the high school or some event.
Well, same thing with AM, it's only going up.
And you're talking eastbound.
Correct.
Yeah.
Volume.
Yeah.
Whether it's built or not, isn't changing more than three or four cars.
Right, and I think if you go back to the study, they show the, I think he talked about the distribution percentages, and there was a small percentage that went to the east, the majority of it goes to the west.
Yeah, some of those tables were eye-charts, the bubbles made sense to me. Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. Do we have, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Kirk Schultz, 5660 Newgate Circle. So, in regards to the traffic analysis, was it contemplating the connection between 58th Street and the new development over at Manning North? Which appears.
The new connection?
Yeah, the new connection, which appears to be a foregone conclusion that that will occur.
Yeah, that's a good point. This study did not specifically look at that, but I did run some of my own calculations, and I did bump up the volumes by, the through volumes on 58th Street by a 50% factor, and still ran the level of service and they still work acceptably. So, that's a, that's a theoretical percentage, we don't really know what the percentage will be, but it's definitely higher than what was included in the original study. So, we did do a little bit of sensitivity testing there, and it was still, the level of service was still acceptable. But that's a good point.
All right, and then Commissioner, I also have a question in regards to the berm on 58th Street. To the top of the berm in relationship to the building, what is the height of that berm as it relates to specifically the building? And the reason of my question has to do with lighting and the infiltration of lighting from this development into the housing development that I currently live in.
It's in our packets, but could the, and do you know it off the top of your head?
Okay.
We'll find it.
And I appreciate the berm that's actually been put in there and the amount of plantings that are actually going in that. For somebody who's in the resort business along the North Shore, we promote dark skies, and any additional lighting in this space for me is a problem. And so, whatever we can do to be able to minimize that, as well as any headlights coming in and out of those access points, and to my neighbors behind me, I still believe that this is going to be a safety problem. You know, I urge every one of you as a commissioner to go onto Newgate, or not onto Newgate, I'm sorry, onto Newberry, and try to exit west at any given time of the day. Complete the connection between 58th to Manning, and the 40 miles an hour that we're seeing now will probably turn into 50 or 60, I just guarantee it. We live there, we see it every single day, you can't get out there, and especially if you're pulling a trailer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on up, sir, state, state your name and address.
My name is Tim Whaley, I live at 5775 Newberry Avenue North. I'm Bobby's neighbor, Bobby's been pretty new, and her husband. And I guess with all due respect, I have nothing against an apartment building here, but I will share with you gentlemen, you couldn't have picked a worse place to try to drop that baby in.
I'm serious, that's the worst place. So, we can have it on the record, please.
There is, and not, not only that, but adding, adding more traffic there. My wife and I have lived there for nine years now, and she researched this house, this is our retirement home. So, she picked this house, and it was Autumn Ridge at the time. When we moved in there nine years ago, there was no noise pollution there, and I'm, from cars, from kids, you know, screaming in and out of there. Now, it's every day, every afternoon, every evening, and I'm not going to say it's all kids, it's anybody that can drive a vehicle with loud pipes. But it's a safety issue, that's really what I'm here to talk about. When our kids come to visit us and they're going to leave, we tell them, "Don't go down to this intersection, go all the way around Autumn Ridge and get onto 58th Street where you can see both ways and you can see what's coming." It's a safety issue, so I don't want to pick on this group. And my dad said to me many times, "You can come to me with a problem any time, but try to bring some solutions. I'll give you the solution, 30 miles an hour." And I know there's state laws that say this and that, to heck with them, 30 miles an hour, and take that sign down that says "Your speed is." When those kids come around that corner, they think, "Holy balls, I'm only going 45?" Bam, they go, and that's when they're coming by Bobby's intersection, okay? I really mean that, and it's nothing against the police, I, I don't know, they could send a squad car out there 24 hours a day and somebody would see them and the word would get out. That, so it's nothing against them at all. We need to make it 30 miles an hour, we need to enforce it at 30 miles an hour, and I think all of this will be just fine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Do you have any other comments from the public?
My name's Ross Tygen, I live at 5795 Newberry Avenue North with my wife of 40, 56, no, 40, 45 years. So, I'm on the corner of Newberry Avenue and the Speedway. And I do mean that is a Speedway, as we're talking about traffic, that is a blind intersection. When you look to the west, by the time you pull out, you cannot see anything coming from the west around that curve. 40 miles an hour is a minimum, when they hit that curve, they come out of that curve and they're doing in excess of 50 miles an hour, no doubt by the time they get to Menards Corner. So, it is a problem, and we've been there a year and a half, and every time we pull out onto that street, it's taking your life in your hands. So, with that, I want to address a little bit, my kudos to the Planning Commission for the, Mr. Kramer indicated the time and effort you guys had spent on putting a comprehensive plan in place. I know that takes a lot of time and effort on everybody's part, and I find it interesting to come to the first meeting and see that on the agenda there's two amendments to a comprehensive plan. And I, I can't help but wonder why that is, because a comprehensive plan should be a long-term plan that's put in place instead of going back and wanting to amend it every two or three as issues come up. So, I think you've got some real good basis there for, for maintaining that comprehensive plan. And as far as apartment building, I'm not opposed to that. I'm curious as to what the height is when it's in addition to over 30, 35 feet. Nobody pinned down exactly how high you're talking, I guess.
It's, from what I can tell, it's just a couple feet, it's probably about 37, 38 feet to the midpoint of that, of that gable. So, we measure building height to midpoint of gable, so, you know, again, I would have to scale it off, but you've got a little additional height over that midpoint, so. So, building height, a few feet, you're probably looking at another 10 feet or whatever.
Okay, and as far as going back to that comprehensive plan, there obviously there was a reason for having that zone the way it was for the open space. You know, whether it's drainage or green space as part of a development, I don't know if it was initially a PUD or if it was started out as just a commercial development, but hopefully you'll take some considerations into those conditional use restrictions and things that you can place on that as you go about changing the proposed comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any other comments?
Hi, I'm Jackie Blair, I live in 5790 Newberry Avenue North, so I'm across the street from Bobby on the corner. And funny, we moved in here 2009, and I worked at 3M at the time, and I was sitting in the tall building and talking to a vendor that I had, and he happened to live in the same neighborhood, as Andy King at the time. And he said, "Well, when you move in there, just be careful, if you have kids that are driving, you know, make sure, you might even want to drive all the way around the neighborhood to go out because it's a really dangerous intersection." So, that's proved to be the case for us. Even just today, when I was driving out, I would love to see in the plan the entrance to the apartment building, when I'm coming out of my neighborhood and taking a left, people are going to be slowing down to turn into that entrance. So, I'm curious how far that is from the intersection of 58th and Newberry, because if it's pretty close, I'm going to be pulling out and accelerating only to get into someone that's potentially slowing down or braking to go into the apartment building. So, I don't know if that's been discussed in the traffic plan or the entrance?
I don't have an exact footage, again, I'm making a list of these items, but, you know, we could find that out, we'll, we'll have that available at the city council meeting. But if you look at the site plan again, the access was pulled off closer to the Kowalskis' development than it was to Newberry. So, there is quite a site distance between.
Yeah, it's just really dangerous, and even having new drivers, you know, it's a family neighborhood, so there's a lot of different ages pulling out of that neighborhood, so a huge concern for us, and one of the main concerns, we really don't support this plan.
For a, for a visual sake, I think if the administrator, Reif, can pull up Exhibit 25. I mean, it's an overlay onto essentially Google Maps, and you can see, it's essentially, you'd have to zoom in if you're able to. It's almost over between the second and third lots.
Let's see.
Just for reference.
We've got some older technology here.
Yeah.
So, between, it would shoot right between 5740 and 5730, if those numbers are right.
Yeah, that's really important, and then I would recommend a traffic study that's from a neutral party, if possible, and just even, those details are so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a question, do you have, do you have a problem with the project besides traffic?
Not necessarily in favor of that additional amount of individuals in that small area, just where we are. I mean, it is, we hear it all the time, there might not be accidents, but I can't tell you the amount of squealing tires we hear nonstop. And, you know, at night, I can sit in my property probably 9 o'clock after, it's very quiet. You don't even feel like you're by a road. But starting in the morning, especially on the weekends, when you have Menards traffic, I mean, there's just a lot of traffic coming through that isn't part of our neighborhood. But then, yeah, so just the amount of volume is my concern.
So, traffic?
Traffic and the amount of residents.
Yep.
In a small space, yep.
Thank you.
Just to take a look again, Jacob has pulled that up, you can see, can you point these out where the access point is of the apartment building right there, and then Newberry is up there.
Max Blair, 5790 Newberry Avenue North, Jackie's husband. I'll just keep it brief, everybody's kind of said what, you know, I share the same thoughts, but to me, I think just common sense says that is just a terrible spot for an apartment building, I'm sorry. Who's going to want to live there and look over a lumberyard? So, our, my concern is, who's going to live there in five years, 10 years? It just degrades and it gets worse, I just have a feeling it's not a desirable location to live, and the rental might be an issue keeping it, your rents might lower, and the clientele or the population might go along with that, is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any more?
Kathy Schultz, 5660 Newgate Circle, my husband Kirk, and we live behind Tim and Bobby. My concern is right now is definitely the traffic. 58th used to just be two lanes, we've been there 28 years, so we've seen all the growth, with Menards, Lowes, everything else. If the apartments are going to be one, two, or three bedrooms, just a two-bedroom apartment, we're adding 160 more cars, if you figure two cars for a two-bedroom apartment. That's a lot. And I just feel that it is, it is a safety issue. Like I said, we've seen the growth, coming around that corner, people don't slow down, they just don't. And there's a lot of kids, seniors from Botwells, there's another senior complex, we have Menards, we have Lowes. You can get out of Kowalskis', you have to go up to the stoplight. You can get out of Kowalski's, you have to go up to the stoplight at the high school to get onto Fifty-Eighth. It's too much traffic. Keep the green space. We need green space. Sorry. It's a nice project, but it's the wrong space.
Thank you.
Maggie Hart and I live at fifty-seven ten-Newgate Circle North. I'm concerned about traffic. It's major traffic with Botwells on one end, high school on the other end, and all the commercial building spots in between. Traffic is just a huge issue. I also agree with it's the wrong spot for an apartment building. I'm concerned about three stories. Mr. Kramer had a very good comment earlier about the new development across from the Lake Elmo Airport. That's a new development. So they knew full well, when they bought that, that they were going to be living across from an airport. They had railroad tracks right by them and they were going to be hit with noise. So technically, we're a developed neighborhood, well-established. And this apartment building is going to be new in our area. And I just don't think it's going to fit. And I'm concerned about the looks of it. Earlier, when we were talking about the, um, the corner of Fifty-Eighth and Oak Green. You know, they mentioned the light pollution, the car traffic. It's the same. Fifty-Eighth is just a heavily trafficked road. And I'm concerned also about Mr. Schultz mentioning the new cut-through that's being, going to be built. That's going to add more. And I just think it's so much unknown that we can stop it at the beginning.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
My name is Barb Bregel. I live at fifty-six ninety-Newberry Avenue. And I want to reiterate what they're saying. It's not only a safety issue, it's a light issue, it's going to be a noise issue. And not only that, I know Oak Park Heights needs to grow revenue, the property tax and that, with Excel Energy Plant closing. I think that spaces and should stay as commercial.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone else from the public that would like to comment?
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing?
I second. Have a motion as second. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed at seven forty-seven.
So I, I'd like to make a few comments and then we can take comments from the rest of the commission. One thing that we've talked about a lot tonight is traffic on Fifty-Eighth Street. A lot of the traffic comments we heard from the public was specifically around Newberry North. And a lot of comments also said Newberry South was a relatively safe road to get out of, or safer than Newberry North. And I think it's because of sight lines. And I appreciate Ed you coming tonight and talking to the traffic study and giving some clarity around that. Because this constructed facility and the proposal in front of us tonight has far better sight lines than Newberry North. Just because of the angle of that road or curve if you drive it, right? Because you're looking at a build on the one side, looking to the west. I also have a few comments, you know, turning, it's a two-lane road, you shouldn't be going all the way to the right. So if they're turning and going to the left, you should be on the left lane, not going into the right lane. So the slowing down traffic going in that direction, going into that facility shouldn't be an issue coming out of Newberry North. Because you shouldn't be going all the way across a lane of traffic. So I think that's something to think about, right? Because it shouldn't affect the traffic coming out of Newberry North, going to the left. And it shouldn't affect traffic going to the right. That being said, this is a commercial property. If we put a Best Buy in there or a grocery store or a quick trip or anything like that, which the city would have to entertain those type of applications. And look at that. That's going to potentially generate more traffic than something that's relatively controlled and contained like a fixed unit apartment complex. I think there's some things to look at as far as the amount of concrete. I think we've done some work there. I think there's some more things to dig into and look into this. But I think from a traffic perspective, there may need to be a little more additional stuff done. But it is commercial property that depending on what you put in there as commercial property, would generate an uncontrolled amount of traffic versus something like this. The city kind of knows plus or minus with the relatively small margin of error, what you're getting. So I think it gives us a little more control over the traffic versus some other potential proposals that would come down the line. One other thing I heard tonight that was a positive was the Kowalski property is amenable. And it sounds like there's a solution in progress, that that would be more than just a emergency access point. And that the property owners would be working to mitigate some of that traffic going onto Fifty-Eighth. It sounds like that's something that's already in the works and could be looked at with this proposal, depending on what the commission decides to do. And I think that could mitigate some of that additional concerns from the local neighborhoods coming off the Newberry roads. Okay, I'll sit back and let you guys see what your thoughts are.
I, I think that the reason that that road's gotten so busy is MINDOT. MINDOT is always the problem. The way that they've done Thirty-Six and all that traffic, traffic from Thirty-Six, when Thirty-Six slows down in the afternoon or in the morning, goes there. And then you've got the high school. So I can see, and I don't think it should be forty. I don't drive forty on that. I'm always driving thirty and people are always passing me. So, and, and it seems like we can't regulate that because that's up to MINDOT once again. So I see MINDOT as one of the big problems here. And another one is that they're closing the King Plant and we have to bring more taxes into the city or we're all going to be paying more taxes. So how do we do that and make people happy? It feels like an impossible to make everybody happy. So that's all I want to say.
I'll go. I think the point about Oak Park Bonds giving gated, or not ungated access is huge. In theory, that traffic down Fifty-Eighth in and out would be negligible with this addition. I think some of the questions about the parking, according to the adjusted ordinance that we, or amended ordinance that we did to call it what it is, I don't have an issue with them being at that number. I think they're doing it intelligently, putting it underground to, to call out that topic. You know, the issue that we had with the sea of parking and pavement and everything with that adjusted ordinance, that solves the problem because you're not going to see the cars, you're not putting more pavement on the ground, you're not adding to the heat island effect. So good job to you guys to put those underground so I don't have an issue with the number of stalls. I completely agree with the road diet approach, but that's not what we're here to talk about. Yeah, it's a unique spot that Jennifer mentioned that we're in with the, the city and taxes and use of land and.
Yeah. I think one comment that I heard earlier that was given is a lot of properties, and I know a lot of my friends honestly live in the condos where they're mixed-use commercial, lower levels, commercial, upper residential. It's not something we're looking at in this specific construction. But it's very common, especially for the younger generation, we want to be much closer to commercial. So I don't personally see that as being a concern with this unit being full long-term.
Rent's not going down, that's for sure. And if you guys are capping it with a market rate place, I believe it's going to be full as well.
Yeah.
Seems to me when, you know, when we sift through everything, the bottom line is, is there a way to somehow deal with the traffic issue? I mean, anybody that drives on Fifty-Eighth on a regular basis knows that the issues that these people are talking about are, you know, they're not, they're not, they're not pulling them out of the hat. They're just, those are real issues. And, and if you walk along Fifty-Eighth on this side of the high school, you can easily take your life in your own hands. And, you know, the, the housing to the south of Fifty-Eighth, you know, they had somebody and drive off the road and ride into their, their kitchen. You know, and they had to put up these huge boulders to keep, to keep the.
Over my house.
Okay.
Don't swear for geese.
Yeah, don't swear for geese.
Yeah. No, so I, I guess the, the issue is, can we, can we develop that property? And also, can we have safe traffic? And that's, I guess that's a question for the engineers.
Well, I think we heard earlier that based on the numbers, based on the engineering statistic, everything appears as though this is well within standards within the Twin Cities with this additional unit in place.
It's interesting because we, we looked at when, when Thirty-Six was redone and they put in the bridge, they did traffic studies and they said, oh, don't worry, there's only going to be, I don't know, thirty-nine thousand, whatever it was. And low and behold, now, the, within the last couple of years, the, the traffic studies and predictions were off only by fifty percent. So there's twice as much traffic on Thirty-Six going over the bridge and coming back as, as we experts predicted and thought about it. So, you know, I, I think traffic is an issue that we need to deal with. And whether, whether we say, well, we're going to have less traffic if we put in a Best Buy, that may in fact be true. But does that mean if we put in a Best Buy, we shouldn't do anything? You know, I think somehow we have to, and it's, and it's partially our job is to somehow meet the concerns of the, of the, of the community and of the, of the neighborhood. And that concern is, is, is traffic, you know? And those, again, that don't live close to Fifty-Eighth, I don't think understand what a pain in the butt ski that street is. Anyway. Enough said.
With length of curve and count that skip stripe, I mean, you're talking two, two-fifty, three-hundred feet with her concern of left-hand turn and the other people going into the apartment complex. I really didn't hear much opposition to the project. I think it seems to be a really good project. It's laid out well. I don't think there's any unbiased on traffic studies because they're putting the public safety first and foremost, not their client. So I don't think there's much risk with that. To me, the traffic seems completely independent of the project. I think that is something Oak Park Heights needs to look at. And I do have a note here from when I looked at this earlier today. You know, with this restriping thought, who pays for that? Who, who would pay for the restriping of, of the Fifty-Eighth?
Yep, Commissioner Nelson, I can answer that. That would be a much broader study that we would have to undertake. And that wouldn't be a part of this project. So that would be something that the city would have to undertake because it would be, you know, it could be the whole length of Fifty-Eighth Street. Yeah. I'd defer to Ed if he has any other comments on that.
And what, real quick, and that leads me into then a signal, you know, a signal project would be.
Yeah, that could be something. I don't, I don't know that there's enough volume for a signal. But to, to your point, yeah, it would be a, a, our larger project for the entire corridor. You'd have to lay out what the cost would be. How do you connect on both ends? Where does it start? Where does it end? You know, there's a lot of things that would need to be looked at further, so.
But I think for the topic at hand tonight.
Right.
I don't see any opposition to this project. With the exception of the traffic. And this to me is a controlled number of traffic versus a commercial property that would be an uncontrolled, unknown. Because we relatively know what this is going to be. And I think, I, I personally think this is a nice-looking opportunity to utilize some space. And I agree that the traffic is something that needs to be explored further, whether that is something that the commission should take offline, Jacob, and we can talk about that at a different time, what the options are for Fifty-Eighth. Because I do think there's some additional conversation that needs to take place with the city.
We, we have Mr. Chair, you know, just my short time being here. We've had conversations in the background on it, but I think as was mentioned here by someone earlier, the, the state's involved with that. And Ed could comment on that, I'm, I'm sure. But there is, in having conversations with our city engineer, there is a chance that, you know, that based on what we hear from the state, it could increase. They could require us to, to increase the speed out there. And so it's kind of, we got to be careful what we wish for. And it sounds counterintuitive. I, I understand that. But we've just got to, we've got to be cautious on how we proceed. And it's, it is unique to hear that, I understand, and where you could be frustrated by it. But we're going to continue to look at it and continue to have conversations with our city engineer about it and see if there's other ways we can look at it, so.
Thank you. That's comforting that it's being looked at. We appreciate that. So any other discussion? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Couple of things related to the motion before it's made. If there is a positive motion, I would say we need to look at a couple of, or one change to the conditions. And number three, with the new information related to access, I would think number three could read, the site plan indicates a location for access from Oak Park Bonds. Additional detail will be required from the applicant for review by the city engineer. And then, then drop off the rest of that. Jacob, we kind of talked about that.
Strike the gate because it's not like it's going away.
Strike the gate. Just leave that kind of open. And then fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, I deal with building height, the setback of twenty-four feet and the final building appearance. Does anyone have any, is anyone favorable to that? Or any, any thoughts on, on conditions fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen?
I think setbacks, I don't have an issue. I mean, it's up against the lumberyard. You look out the window and you take a tour and you want to be a resident, you'll see that it's a lumberyard, that's forklifts, that's beeping, that's trucks. You choose to live there, you're subject to the noise. You can obviously see that before you move in. Colors of materials are using quality materials. LP SmartSides great for this type of application. Stone will look nice. And then the building height, I think just that further definition before it goes to city council, especially with the, the burn comparison to the overall, would be a good concrete item because I'm sure there's going to be more.
Yeah, we'll clarify that for the council. Sorry, I can't do that tonight, but I just need a little bit more information to get you an exact number. And you guys can get that, too.
I would make a motion to approve as recommended with the adjustments on item three. As explained by.
Staff.
And the friendly amendment that we're going to clarify fourteen, we're okay with fifteen. Right? So you're just going to clarify that height, Mr. Richards?
Yes. I'll add that.
Can you one with a second?
I would call for a second.
I second.
Do we have any other discussion?
Obviously, this is just preliminary. And so dealing with the traffic issues and everything else would be something that, as we go along, we would deal with.
That's correct. Sure, the council will, will discuss it also. And, you know, if they want to provide a recommendation to our, our city engineer to look at options, whatever, that is really up to the council if they want to pursue it further.
All right. It's called for a roll call vote. Mr. Reif?
Commissioner Kramer? Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Dyke?
Aye.
Commissioner Husby?
Aye.
Commissioner Vandenberg?
Aye.
Motion passes. Again, just for clarification, this will go before the city council on the twenty-fifth. They're the final decision-making body. We are just putting forth a recommendation to the city council from the information provided by us tonight. So thank you for your time, everyone, today. Really appreciate it.
Kurt, nice to meet you, too.
Moving on, this is the next step of the agenda. I see we have no additional new business. Doesn't look like we have any old business. Doesn't look like we have any old business. As far as informational goes, we've got a couple upcoming meetings. It looks like I'm going June twenty-fifth, and then Commissioner Husby's July twenty-third. Do those work still?
Yeah, should be fine.
Okay.
I guess, just thinking through the density of these two topics and the community involvement, is there value in splitting it up for city council? Because that's going to be a, that's a heavy day. Because I've got other topics on top of these.
Yeah, I guess my recommendation would be out of respect for the petitioners that they both have that opportunity on the twenty-fifth, you know, and if it's a longer meeting, you know, it's a longer meeting. But want to be, want to be fair as we're dealing with, with our petitioners.
Yeah.
We haven't had six-minute meetings yet.
I agree.
We haven't had one in a minute, so.
The city council's very lucky here in that they have very short meetings.
They need to do, put in their time at once.
That's right.
All right. I would entertain a motion for adjournments.
Move to second.
Any discussion? Do you want to talk about going home, stopping? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone.
Don't hesitate to six.